On the bay.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockham County Commissioners Meeting. We start our meeting with the pleasure of the agents.
Hi.
Pleasure to be here. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockham County Commissioners Meeting of September twenty first, twenty twenty three. Uh, your attendants. Steve, do you mind taking my video out? Don't mind. Uh, we have Sheriff's Sales. We have the Sheriff's Department. We have Kathy Stacey. I don't know anybody else. And I think that's that the zone in the room. We have two gates. Allison, Chris, and Boyle.
Good morning.
Chuck Nicholson, Al, um. Leila, and we have Commissioner Dragic, and myself, Mr. Chair Teller. We're gonna start with our openings for the Institute for Law, the millions, the nursing sign, the directions.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with the recommendations.
Second, motion made as seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening multi-building.
Is it allowed? Oh, yes.
I don't open it right now. Like you would have samples.
We have them mailed directly to the.
Okay. Such a revelation. Review. So, okay. And then, so now we're on to the multi-building. I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with the recommendations, sir.
Which remain as seconded. Any discussion on this? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Laundry Equipment Preventative Maintenance Service Contract.
I move to award the proposal for laundry equipment preventative maintenance and service contract to Tri-State Laundry System for the period beginning October first, twenty twenty three, through September thirtieth, twenty 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 five, for an annual amount not to exceed eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the Rockham County Rehabilitation and Nursing Center, and eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the Department of Corrections, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion remained as seconded. Any discussion?
It sounds like they're the only bidder, and we're using them currently. You know, how how significant is the rate of increase for the contract?
I don't know specifically. I'm sorry.
Just adding up the general.
I don't.
Okay. Do you feel like it's still?
I do. Actually, they're significantly less expensive than the other two vendors that traditionally quoted.
Okay.
So, um, I wasn't surprised. Usually, it's Daniels, Yankee, and Tri-State, and Tri-State has been the most competitive consumer, so.
Thank you.
So, let's start then. It's not on the motion, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Dental digital x-ray sensor and software.
I move to award the proposal for dental digital x-ray sensors and software to Harry Shine Dental Incorporated for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made as seconded. Is there any discussion? Not offset? On the motion, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Or not the consent agenda.
I'm I move to approve the September fourth, twenty twenty three, public and non-public meeting.
Second, motion been made as seconded. Is there any additions, attractions on the minutes?
Good, thank you.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, in our package, we have long-term care plans, work planned. It's informational. I don't know if anyone wanted to chime in on that at all.
Thank you. Just impressive how much is getting done. When you look at all the efforts and, you know, how much has been, uh, it's all identified, you know, sort of in terms of the stage of progress, and I was, I just found it impressive, given all the things going on at long-term care, how well uh, progress is moving along and how organized it is.
We continue to try, Commissioner, every day.
Very good, Jason. Uh, the surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty eight. Oh, and dash A.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty eight, eight A, and there are twenty-six mattresses surplus with items to properly dispose of.
Second, motion's been made as seconded. Is there any discussion?
Twenty-six year, I mean, ten-year-old mattresses.
Plus, so.
Yeah.
I see no issue.
Time to time, we get the good use out of it.
Yeah.
Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Also, in our packet, we have a Yeti Tumbler Opportunity Information Hall. Um, I'll let Allison chime in on that briefly.
Um, yeah, this is just that we had the Yeti cups. Um, we did this flash into summer, so that was the open enrollment and wellness activity. If the participation was lower than expected, so we would like to push these Yeti tumblers out, so we've created a wellness quiz that we will internally mail to all those that didn't have a chance to pay me everything with a return envelope, so they can do their little wellness quiz, it's a yes or no, or A, B, and C, make it really simplified, and then we'll get the Yeti cups out to those individuals. Uh, we'll have a three-year period to get it done, after which we'll then incorporate the Yeti, the remainder of the Yeti tumblers into our new hire orientation as kind of a welcome gift to the people coming in.
Okay, any feedback from Commissioner?
Those Yeti mugs are fabulous, the size, the scale, you get your Yeti right there.
Okay with that plan?
Yes, that sounds great.
Okay, very good, thank you. Let's go to three Thanksgiving cards. Again, Allison?
That's just for the Board of Commissioners. Uh, we've done it in the past, and we're looking at some sort of item for the recognition to our employees for Thanksgiving. We're working on that now.
Okay, any discussions?
Um, we've done pies. We're looking at something else. I'm not sure yet. We're trying to find something.
Stay tuned.
Early discussion? Not what we're doing.
Do we have, um, your permission to use our electronic signatures on that card?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, please.
Questions, I do? What? You're being asked a question? I'm sorry.
Do we have your permission to use your electronic signature on the Thanksgiving cards?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, we have HR bi-weekly improvement report in your packet. Something anyone want to comment on?
I do.
Yeah, I read it.
Okay, so one thing I noticed is that, um, I mean, this, it seems like the most encouraging week we've had in a while, or bi-weekly report. It looks like thirteen CO offers, three LNA offers, two dispatchers. I mean, this is trending really as well as I've seen thus far. Well, I don't know if it's possible, is it to do some sort of like graph to see the uptick, to see what, how we're trending overall um, across the bi-weekly reports, like where we are in terms of our numbers, but hopefully, you know, we've sent, submitted enough, a number, we have thirteen CO offers. They still have to go through policies and background, but I think it is really encouraging in that. Um, and I know engineering, we have, um, coming into facilities, this is like places where there's been a big gap, so hopefully, you know, all our efforts, I think it's been a a combination of thing, of factors, but all the efforts with recruiting, the social media, with, um, what we've done with, um, wages. It's got together, so I thought it was very encouraging.
Um, so I, in graph, I look at the graph here, I was kind of excited because, well, obviously, we have an obvious nursing um, recruitment, and that's gonna be, that's gonna be a longer term battle, because we're still dealing with traveling nurses making good money, and I don't fall for that. I guess that's just the reality of the world that we live in right now, but I'm really happy to see some of these graph bars going down. Um, you know, particularly corrections, um, and, uh, you know, I, I think, I'm gonna agree as well, we're doing a good job. It is a numbers game. And the more, the more people that click through, and the more people we interview, we, we should start tackling some of those places that really need help. Um, any, anything else on this? No, I'll move on. Two, let's see. Uh, Adult Medical Daycare, you have in your packet AMCD payout report for August twenty twenty-three. That's informational. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to talk about this, because if you look, I mean, the good news is, we're sending, we're getting the money out. The, my concern is, the way we're trending, we're going to be over budget, and we're not going to be able to sustain all of the, uh, applications. We have all of the, um, recipients who are getting the, this, um, these, this coverage, and we're not. We have a couple more applications today. The way I see it, it looks like last month or the, the amount we paid to date sixteen, seven, fifty last month, because I know we added some, it was ninety-five, seventy. We had allocated a hundred thousand dollars. If we add no one else for the rest of the year, and we keep at, keep at the same rate, we're gonna be about twelve thousand dollars over budget for the year, so I think we need to um, look at two things. One, how many days, you know, I think we should, we need to, one, have a discussion about, do we need to, is there any place we can draw a little bit more money to help? The good news is, we're helping a lot of people. The second issue is, do we want to adjust for the new applications? Like today, we have an application for an individual who's requesting four days. Should we take a slightly more conservative approach and, you know, approve two or three days for now? Um, with the idea that we need to figure out how we're going to keep this sustained throughout the year. Chuck, do you have any?
I don't have the details.
Okay.
So, let's do this. Let's, um, the good points that you raised, let's do a deeper dive, uh, maybe within the next couple of meetings. Uh, if we have to move monies around, I don't want to go over the budget, because the budget's done. But this will be, you know, the new budget, we'll start talking in March, but.
I think we, we're gonna, we're on pace that we're gonna need to transfer some money there, and so.
So, we have what? Three or four different places. I don't, I want to take a look to see if one place, like, let's say, Easter Seals is getting more there on the trajectory of overbuilt and over-expanding their allotment, but they could be one of them that they're not, they're not using anything. What I'm suggesting is we move some of the lines, if possible. That's why I want to do a deeper dive.
The lines of what? Between Easter Seals? I'm talking in total.
For, yes, but I'm saying maybe Solifon is not spending as much as they should be. I don't know.
I'm assuming that, it's assuming, just looking at the total of all, assuming that we are going to be moving money from one place to the other, so. What I'm saying is, for, we have allocated a hundred thousand dollars for, um, towards adult medical daycare.
Yeah.
Thus far, across all three, um, facilities, we've allocated sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
We are, last month, we spent ninety-five, seventy. Again, this is just looking at across all three. So, we are going at this pace, we are going to outpay, our monthly payout exceeds what we have budgeted for for the year.
Right.
So, we're going to, it's not, you know, we can't move money within, we're gonna have to bring money from the outside into this line, so.
Uh, and, and that's a conversation we'll have to have eventually, because I don't know if that's the direction we want to go. We set a budget approved by
So then we need.
Dominant Commissioners and the delegation. Just because we're getting more people asking, that's okay. You can just do a deeper search and see where we're keeping up with what you're talking about. I think that's where you go. Anything else?
Um, I agree with your concern. We've also, are the only county that has applied for the federal funding that would support this specifically. And I'm gonna make a guess that we get that. A gamble, a guess, call it what you will, that we will get that funding.
I.
And if we are on track to be twelve thousand dollars over, I feel confident that we'll find a line item to be able to transfer that. You, what you brought up is important and accurate, and it's a good observation, but it also speaks to the need for adult daycare, and if we can come up with the money, the funds, uh, in, in fact, it emphasizes what's been already applied for, so that we can, you know, be able to help these folks.
Yes, I mean, I think this is a great resource for, you know, and I think the program is great, the way we have it set up is fantastic. Um, uh, kudos to Commissioner, the former Commissioner Foyle, for, um, structuring this, but, um, I'm bringing it to everybody's attention, because on the agenda today, we have two new applicants, so in terms of how we're considering this, frankly, I, I agree, I think we should be supporting this and finding the money, and I think if we went and asked the delegation and said, listen, we need a line item transfer, we need to do something, even if we have to pull something, they would be wholly supportive of this, because it was a long road, so anyway.
I agree.
I'm more, it's like, I'm raising it as a, let's pay attention and sort of a red flag of, we're going to have to address this, because it's not sustainable where we're at.
Very good. Let's move on to accounts payable.
Um, I'm, yes, I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes an accounts payable list total of two million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents.
Second, motion made as seconded. Any discussion? Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, liaison updates. I'm gonna go, uh, Commissioner Godu, we have anything you have to report to Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. I've got a lot to report. Shocking. We have, um, so over, big, big things happening, uh, um, a couple of big things happened, uh, this past week. So, first, over at Long-Term Care, we unfortunately had three positive staff members, three for COVID, three, but, um, everything is still trending in a, um, just fine in terms of the residents. Uh, we celebrated on Thursday the twentieth anniversary of, uh, the Ernest Parker assisted living facility, and with that, um, there was a lovely celebration, um, where, uh, the residents got, uh, hors d'oeuvres, and it was really, um, uh, Commissioner Chair Teller and I attended, and it was really a wonderful event. Today is World Alzheimer's Day, and you'll notice that in celebration to wear purple. I would like to note that all the commissioners pulled it out, so thank you.
We do read our reading.
My fellow commissioners. Next, on, um, October, I think it's Sunday, October first, is, there's gonna be an Alzheimer's walk-in. Rockham County is raising money to, uh, in support of Alzheimer's, and we're going to, there is gonna be a walk-in enforcement, so, um, there's a number of people signed up.
Stop, sorry.
There's another number of people who are signed up to participate. Um, on September twentieth, uh, Jason is gonna be, uh, hosting along with, I think, Allison and Chuck, or a number of state reps who are gonna come in toward the long-term care facility. So, um, just be which is really great, and some of the nice things that we're doing. Um, and I'm gonna make a transition to, um, tie this into finance, which is, um, some of you know, there was a, there was a pilot program, applicant, grant application to, for delay for institutional care and, um, offered by the state, and thank you to Chuck and Emily and Jason, because we have been, our, uh, grant application has been approved, so we are the only county in the state to get a, uh, approved application, so it's, it's really exciting and a really big deal. It's, um, quite remarkable. It's gonna be a lot of work, but, um, it, you know, it just speaks to the rock strong, and we're sort of Rocky and County, we're leaders. And to continue with the finance end of good news, and to connect to, uh, Department of Corrections, um, we were awarded two million dollars through the opioid abatement program grant, so, um, that will be used over for a number of issues, it can be used for next door, it can be, you know, there are a number of opportunities to apply those funds. Um, the jail has a population of one fifty-two, it seems like it's been trending consistently in the one fifties. Um, so Jason is not here today, because he's up at Conqueror testifying on a bill regarding OSHA's, meeting OSHA's standards, which is really important. So, uh, we're happy that he is doing that, and, uh, there, the other night, there was an incident at the, um, nursing home with some concern, and, um, it heard like somewhere between nine and ten at night, and, um, we had a number, uh, thanks, thanks to the Sheriff's Department who came out and helped to trust the situation, and, um, you know, brought safety and security to the situation, and so we appreciate the ongoing collaborative work between, with their department collaboration, so thank you.
But, so I was, I was sure of fun, but thank them as well, I know, in that, in that situation. Um, you know, I just had heard about it, um, a few days ago. And of course, it's, it's a, it's that time of the year we are, I guess, well. So, um, I did have a little discussion with both you and Jason about maybe possibly, uh, doing something, we'll, we'll, we'll talk further as to maybe, um, making sure that residents feel safe, the staff feels safe. That's not to say that they, they weren't safe, it's, it's just a perceived thing, when you see somebody, you know, that you don't know and trust in the property, you know, it's a concern, so we will talk about that again later. Um, uh, Jude gave me a buzz yesterday, she had a couple of couple of issues that popped up real quick, and she's right on top of that, so one is the wastewater generator had an issue, um, and actually, she said that that was taken care of, and we had another generator issue
At the jail.
At the jail. So, working on that as well, um. Jude's been very busy, also with the new building as well, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of work everyone's doing, so. Um, and I know Allison, uh, is doing a lot as well. You know, it always seems like every week we talk about this, and everyone's like, yeah, we're all busy, and it's true, everyone's really busy, they're doing great work, so. And then lastly, I do want to mention also, um, I did attend the twentieth anniversary of the assisted living facility. Um, very proud of the fact that it's named after, uh, Ernie Barker, who was a uh, uh, Rockham County Commissioner for twenty-eight years. He lived in Derry, and he was a champion for both children and seniors. Um, so much so that he had assisted living named after him, and he has an elementary school in Derry named after him, so that tells you a lot about what his dedication was, but what I'm most proud of is, I was, I called Jason, because I know Ernie Barker's nephew, uh, who lives in Derry, uh, David Barker, I know him well, and, um, I called Jason first and asked him if I could invite him. Uh, Jason said he, I could, so I invited him and his wife, and I have to tell you, Jason, they've, they're still talking about it, how nice everybody was, they, uh, they were very, very happy. They came in, they gave kudos to the, the, the building, uh, and the staff was cheerful, and, I mean, I, all good stuff that came out of it. Now, on top of that, at the end, after we had our cake and watched, um, some of the seniors get their awards, which was kind of neat to watch, because the seniors were kind of exciting. Um, the Jason and Kendra, uh, and were able to force Dave Barker and his wife and I, who assisted living, just to show them. Now, David was here when it was originally named after his uncle. So, he hadn't been back in twenty years, and, uh, we walked him through, and they were fluent, and they they were very, very happy with everything, just wanted to let me, like, kudos to Jason and Kendra for going the extra mile. It was great watching them serve the seniors, doing some of that stuff, so. One day, and, uh, thank you for, for, thank you. Uh, read mine. Uh, let's move on to the for health consulting at at UMass Medical School and Deminification Restriction to RP submission. So, who wants to?
Sure, I'm moving to table that.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna table, do I have a second? I'll say, I have a second. All those in Davis AI tables. Uh, okay, now we're on to operate grant applications, payout review, awards, any discussion? Chuck, do you want to give us a rundown? We, we brought it this week from last week. We continue to, uh, the, the this week, so.
Yeah, I, I can, so, so for the eleven-page document here, for the first item that we'd be looking at is the third to last, the cat said LLC doing business as Tokyo Japanese Steakhouse. Uh, they requested twenty-five thousand. Um, yeah, so this restaurant so falls under a cost quality.
Okay. Um, so we're gonna take these individually, I guess, so what's your thoughts on that? We did not, they, they came before us originally, so, right?
No, this is the first time, they've been hanging out there a while. Quite a while.
All right.
And so, same thing as the next one, too.
All right, so, uh, first thing I'm gonna say is, we haven't given anybody twenty-five thousand, so that's not gonna happen, but, um, does anyone else have any comments, or would you like to do with that?
I'd lean towards five thousand dollar award.
Commissioner Boyle? Okay, and I'll make that three. So, we'll put five thousand for that. Um, who's next?
Uh,
East Dairy Road?
Yeah, fifty East Dairy Road, doing business as East Dairy Tavern, so same thing, uh, they asked for twenty-five thousand.
Right, and they applied before.
Yep, so, well, yeah, it's, this is their first and only application, but yeah, it's been outstanding for a while, yeah.
Commissioner, would like to do the five thousand?
Same, yeah.
All right, uh, what's this?
Uh, yes, this is an odd one. This is, uh, a group that's actually headquartered in Hennecker, but they're hoping to apply, because they were doing a performance about Rockham County in Rockham County. Um, I,
I would not.
I'd be leaning towards no.
I wouldn't support that either.
So.
It doesn't sound COVID-related to me.
Well.
And it's so almost, it almost feels like a stress that you want to play, but.
Yeah, I, I, I don't support that.
So, all right, so it, it sounds like they're on the same page, we're gonna deny that.
Okay.
All right. Now, we have.
Okay, so the next one is, we did get a, um, a few
New nonprofit.
Um, nonprofit financial assistance ones.
What page is that on?
Well, let me see, because that's the one that has the lowest number of applications, so.
Begins on.
Page six of eleven. It's the last four at the bottom on page six of eleven, so that would make Children's Law Center of New Hampshire being the first one.
Children's Law Center, okay. We're around like three thousand, five hundred and three?
Yeah. Yeah, and they, they barely just started up during COVID. But it seems like they do good work, so.
What do you guys want to do?
I think that we should give them at least five thousand. I read who they were, and I, I looked them up, but this is an organization that's filling the gaps of underprivileged kids that have, are in positions that they need to support, and the court bought into attorneys that are not quite adequate, and they're stepping in.
Right, okay.
I, I.
No, fine, all right.
Do you think we wanted? So, for some of these nonprofits, we've given more than, you want to do five thousand?
Well, they only asked for thirty-five hundred, I, and I'll, I'll, I'm gonna guess in error. They should have asked for more.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think it's still modest for what we have.
So, five thousand.
So, we're all free on that for five, okay. How about Southern District ones? Yeah, this is not the first time they've applied, right?
Yeah, this is the second. They didn't get anything before. All the YMCA's did receive a fair amount from PPP. Now, I don't know how many employees they had, as far as they're getting that much, but.
Right. I had said no to these, uh, YMCA's, because they were, they received hundreds of thousands in PPPs.
Right.
So, um, I, again, I think our objective here is to help the smaller organizations or that haven't, do have access to the great PPPs.
So, so.
So, can this be just, like, get denial then?
Yeah.
Okay, because before tonight, there was a, we're not gonna award for now.
Well, I don't think that we standard denial, we just don't award.
Well, we.
Well, they asked for status. They asked me for status.
And we can just say, listen, um, it's very simple. Our objective is to help some of the smaller organizations that didn't have access to other federal dollars, and based on your federal dollar awards, you know, we find to offer.
Would you state that the county put a preference on those that were able to know PPP or Main Street funding, so we do, we do put that in the
Right.
the narrative?
And we've been talking, I mean, I think from day one, I was talking about, because I had created a rubric of things that I look at, and one of those things was, again, is.
Yeah. All right, so, enforcement.
Historical side, that's a new publication. They have had a previous one before.
Um, I, because of the educational component, I would, um, I think five thousand dollars is consistent in.
Okay, I'll go with that. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, and, uh, Wyndham Health and Games?
Yes.
Ten, there are no.
I, I would, I would also, I would support.
Have we donated to them before?
No. But it does seem like this would be one of the ones I would support giving ten thousand dollars to, because they do a significant amount of work in terms of, um,
I should be.
Yeah, fuel assistance, they were doing a lot of fuel assistance, so I think, um, this is the.
You're okay with ten?
This is exactly what we're trying to support in terms of, especially, we gave additional, you'll know that, that when we were doing awards, we gave more awards across that are really targeting
Food insecurity.
Food insecurity, housing insecurity, things. Food insecurity, housing insecurity, things of that nature certainly.
Yeah, I think Heather, we gave ten thousand too. That's why I agree with that.
Okay, so we're all on the same page.
Okay, then the last category, we gotta jump to the, what I kinda call the sub awards category.
Particular.
For nonprofits, and that's going to be, let's see, first one is Waypoint. So page nine of eleven, the last one on page nine of eleven. Um see, so waypoints physically, this fortunate waypoint is Richie McFarland Center.
Oh yeah, that's a great.
Then that's a Rockham County organization.
We had.
We do help them out with some um was with limited. I think it's seventy five hundred for budget amount of funding. But this is their second application. I think what might happen is the first one, Waypoint overall is a much bigger organization, but this is specifically Richie McFarland operations.
Right. Um I just want to pull out one thing. Yes, I mean essentially. The reason I, I was actually adamantly, I would not admit, but I was opposed to them before because we weren't sure where it was.
General, it was a general discussion.
Yeah.
But now they've kind of detailed it, so we, we see what they're doing, but I did go with ten.
I'm just reading one. I'm sorry, if you could just indulge me for a minute.
Where are they?
There, um the. Stratum.
Stratum, Stratum Greenland is.
Yeah.
I think what happened was Waypoint um kinda they merged into Waypoint because they have some. Not the, they don't do the same operations, but they have the same overall arcing kind of goals.
I remember that when we had the budgets.
I was just. Did they have a specific, I was trying to.
I think they have, they, they want.
Outdoor.
They have a specific purpose they want to do with this.
Yeah.
Children and families.
I'm just looking at.
Living in poverty, blowing um.
They're, they're. They're working on an outdoor classroom. So that.
Yeah, many times the sub awards, they're supposed to have a, you know, they're not supposed to just put in. The maximum fifty thousand, they're supposed to run for targeted budgeted project that they wanna, they want to.
What do you, you good with ten?
I'm good with ten.
Okay. I guess you can.
Okay, the next one is Friends of Seabrook Community. And let's see. I think this is the group that before they had put in a, they had asked for fifty thousand, I think, before, but it was a very detailed budget.
Yeah.
Um for after school classes or sessions to help those kids that fell behind during COVID. So this, I think, pay for two instructors and also more importantly, provide bus transportation because. Um all the kids' parents basically work and they, you know, that's where they kind of fall through the cracks if there's no transportation. Available for them.
Is a real issue.
I, I would give, I would award them another ten.
Me too.
Uh I, I think that there's a significant problem with uh kids who fell behind during COVID that didn't. Keep up with the instruction and anyone has a little difficulty at home with internet and such would even be in worse shape. And that's what's going on in Seabrook. Probably one of the lowest income communities in our district.
Sounds like we're all on the same page with ten. Okay.
Uh peace of mind, this is one that we've mentioned, but since it was a subword, we didn't really uh discuss or the commissioners didn't discuss far as voting. This is the organization that while it's headquartered up in Rochester, they do services down into Rockham County for helping seniors apply for Medicaid.
Uh I don't know. I don't see where the tie in is with COVID, to be honest with.
Well, this is a subword to help.
Right.
Those populations disproportionately affected by COVID.
I, I mean, I see you've got um money across each district. Are they gonna, they're gonna?
Because they filter down the different communities. I'm, I mean, they didn't give an estimate as far as how many, you know.
Oh, I'd say ten. I'd be happy. I mean, I'm okay with that.
No, I'd go with five.
You want to try? Alright.
Because I think that they're spreading out and probably applying at all the counties. They're probably applying in Scranton County as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think I definitely, I think that lower amount is appropriate in here.
Alright, we can try. Um, Anthony Paul.
We, that we already.
Yeah, we, we did. Sorry. That was, yeah, that's why they have twelve thousand over.
Two we have is the past out Y M C A and then Arts and Reach. Um with respect to the past out Y M C A, we denied their first application because again, because. Yeah, so again, I would put them in the same category as the other Y M C A because they did get so much. And Arts and Reach, they made a secondary application. Um, just because our goals are targeted more towards the, we gave five thousand dollars and arts are important. But I think our goals again are, should be more targeted to some of the insecurity, uh you know, housing insecurity, food insecurity, those picture things. So. I would table that for now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna agree. Alright, sounds like.
Some, there are some additional applications coming down the pipeline, new generations. Um, um. Cafeteries, these are again, these are specifically directed towards um housing insecurities, homeless shelters and senior living. So um I think those are ones.
Yeah, they just haven't reached out.
Right.
Um, last I heard from them was August twenty fifth because they had a question on, because they, they did say, well, we did get fifty thousand of P P P monies. I'm like, well, it's kind of relative that fifty thousand compared to six hundred thousand for Y M C A organization is not, yeah. But it is for their homeless shelter that they operate out of Greenland.
Yeah, that, and that shelter helps.
They want to expand it.
Right, and they help out. They also were, have some specific sports running. Who've been.
So I'm, I'm looking at that. So alright. Let's uh, let's go to the human resources and additional position, the facility operating on some place.
Point of all, I believe we should make a motion.
So.
To make each of these awards.
Right.
As we, just we, I mean, we agree, but we didn't make a motion in both, so.
Rather than making a formal, I'm just gonna make a motion to adopt the. Um, we were in consensus on every single one, so to adopt the consensus of each of the awards.
Right, I think you should list what they are. I have them in front of me.
I can do it. It's not that big a deal. Um, okay, maybe just. If we want to be more, oh, well. I move to award the fall, make the following awards with respect to local businesses assistance category two point three to. Eighteen L L C D B A Tokyo Japanese Steakhouse in the amount of five thousand dollars. And to the fifty East Dairy Road. Uh. D B A East Dairy Tavern, five thousand dollars. With respect to nonprofit financial assistance program expenditure category two point three four, I move to award the city Children's Law Center of New Hampshire five thousand dollars. The Portsmouth Historical Society, five thousand dollars, and the Wyndham's, Wyndham's Helping Hands, ten thousand. With respect to the um, with respect to the nonprofit several, sub awards for nonprofits um category. Uh expenditure category three um to Waypoint. Richie, specifically the Richie McFarland Center in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Friends of Seabrook Community. Let's see, even, did we? Um, we had previously awarded them. Five thousand dollars. I mean, did you make a decision about whether we're doing an additional ten or just?
We said additional ten when we were discussing this just now. That's what my notes say.
Okay. Um, so to award them uh ten thousand dollars, an additional ten thousand. To Peace of Mind Medicaid Consultant, five thousand dollars. And.
I'll second that motion. Thank you. And I'm starting. Uh, I'm not sure you think the point.
Yes.
If I do, yes, I hope, yes.
Thank you.
Onto human resources for the additional position, facilities, operations, um before I turn it over to. Uh Allison and Jude, I just wanna say that um I was brought into the discussion about uh. Looking at, at re, rehabbing this position. I personally think it's very important for two reasons. One. Um, I'd love to have Jude here at Rockingham County forever, uh because she does an fantastic job, but we all know that that's not gonna happen. Uh and the fact that the foreman is leaving us. We really need somebody that um while, while Jude's still here and I'm hoping to get at least five more years. Somebody can be under her and she can train somebody, you know, because of all of her institutional knowledge, it's gonna take time for someone to learn that. This. Position would be basically second. And I think, to be honest, it's important to all of our main departments. It should be a succession plan. You should be somebody that's. Uh they're really looking to, to, in case something happens, whether it's job relocation or they retire out. Somebody can naturally, so I, you know, I'm supporting this, but I just want to let you know upfront, I think it's extremely important. Um. And with that, I'll leave it. If you want to start, Allison.
Most of you, make the motion, please, so we can go into discussion. Just. Um, I move to approve or request for a new additional full-time position for facilities operations, assistant director, facilities operations. Effective September twenty first, twenty twenty three, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Sorry, which has been made a seconded. Uh right, so now we're um on to discussion.
Um, basically, um Jude and I um have been looking at her department for years. Um and just talking about the different um aspects of positions. Um and the critical need for trades. Um also, uh we have talked lightly on succession planning. But I think we've come to a point with the new building coming in, uh the possibility of some other things uh strategically looking forward from other departments and what they want to do. It makes sense to have somebody in a second position. While the foreman position um has been there for many years. Um that person was more of a slight supervisory, but uh also working type of individual. Um this position is really going to be somebody that is going to be um collaboratively working with Jude on strategic and current things that are going on. Day-to-day development of other things, um and also facilitating when she um is unavailable. The, the foreman position will remain um in the, the mix, but the funding, we are gonna just hold towards this position. Um for this time, but we're not looking to fill that foreman position right now. We'll let it stay so that this position can come in. And then between Jude and the new position, they can determine what that foreman position will look like and what the greater need is for the supervision. The day-to-day interactions on the floor throughout the campuses uh with the foreman directing under the tutelage of this assistant director. Um I think this, this department had this position before. Um there obviously was a transition many, many years ago where they removed that position. I'm sure it could have been a financial back in the day. There were a lot of different things going on financially throughout the years here. But I think um we're at a capacity. Um. The trades positions, as you know, are gonna be hard to fill. Uh this will be somebody that has to have those skill sets um at a higher level. Um that can also jump in and move things around and strategically may be able to handle that situation with Jude, so she can focus on. More of the day-to-day operational aspects at the higher level that the board is gonna come in from her and this new facility. And that person can do, jump in and do what she's trying to do in the same element as she does. And you can talk more about that. Very well done, Allison. Thank you.
Jude, you want to add anything else on?
I, I think Allison recapped it really effectively. We have been talking about it for a long time.
Yeah.
I do think the foreman's position has become um more of a working position and really key to trying to maximize the limited number of tradespeople that we have. And consequently, they've really not been able to provide me with any assistance at all for the last couple of years. And the facilities operations, Chuck and I have talked about this a bit. Where, you know, traditionally, we're a department that costs money. And so the only way we can save money to the county is to figure out how to, you know, generate revenue or do efficiencies and. We, we did the biomass plant, we did the solar, you know, we look to these opportunities, but it's hard for me by myself. To, to look forward to those and to still continue to maintain everything else that's going on here. I think it's time for the department to have a, a second, and I think it would be really good for the county, not just for me. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question. How does this affect the budget? Are we adding a position or are we swapping one out?
Positions, we're gonna add a position, but we're not gonna fill the foreman position and um.
To make that far this new position.
For this budget year.
Because all the shift tech openings that we've had and continue to.
Yeah, I have six openings right now.
And we also have, also have two plumbers, one we made an offer to, or gonna make an offer to hopefully. And then that'll leave that plumber, one plumber position open. And it's taken us this long to try to even get somebody in the plumber to come forward to interview. So. I think it's unfortunately, unfortunate budgeting support.
Right.
That's kind of.
Early question. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor. So on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu, yes? I hope, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's do uh long-term care, adult medical daycare.
I move, move to approve an adult medical daycare grant request dated August thirty first, twenty twenty three to Silverthorne for an additional client G. Of, I'm sorry, G J W at an amount of twenty five dollars per day, one day per week as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second, most have been made a seconded. Any discussion?
I mean, I really highlighted my this, I would like to continue to support these individuals. We are gonna have to. Really look at this and figure out where we're gonna pull money because. The next one is for four days.
Yeah, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh second one?
To approve an adult medical daycare grant request dated September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three to Silverthorne for an additional client. S H N amount of twenty five dollars per day, four days per week as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Most have been made a seconded.
Chuck, do you think we'll be able to find some? The money?
You know, what, what will happen is if we do end up needing a Liam transfer, the executive committee's opinion has been, don't come to us in the first quarter, second quarter. Come to us in like May for that transfer, if that's the route that we go.
Right.
Obviously, we have somewhat the unknown of the pilot program grant that we don't know how much we're getting, but. That our, our goal with that is to enhance even more so and direct more individuals to adult medical daycare. And one argument could be that we only budget a hundred thousand. So state can't try to claim that with this being grant funds that we were like double dipping because no, because we only budgeted for a hundred thousand. So. If we have going over, yes, I think as Commissioner Godu was, I, I think alluding to is that. Might as well come from that grant because again, one, we're not supplanting, we only budget a hundred thousand, so not supplanting anything. Uh if some of these end amounts were to go, you know, fertilized by the grant instead.
So on the motion. Which we report?
Yes.
Should I do?
Yes, I vote yes.
Just wanted to. Yeah, I, uh, I, little I am twelve, shit, uh, for us to use special fund.
I move to approve the use of the nursing home special fund efforts to pay for the, the negotiated amount of thirty six hundred for larger monitors. The vendors. Shipped in error as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second, which has been made a seconded. Is there any discussion?
I can just speak to it. The membership bigger monitors, the residents really liked the bigger screen and now they want to keep watching. And so they're gonna go through the resident fund, so there's money there. This is a, I'm sure everybody has a, has a whole battle with this as well and one partner wants a bigger TV screen.
My wife will not allow, will not be happy until the football players are full size.
I think every household can relate to this today.
So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Help, uh connect.
I move to approve the Health Connects agreement for the software subscriptions agreement approved by the board on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three and authorize the chair to sign on necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of healthcare service.
Second, most have been made a seconded. Any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu, yes? I vote yes. Onto the bottom heads updates. I promised Chuck next thing to go first because he wore purple today, which he got the mental, so Chuck, take it away.
Um, just quickly, um on the two grants, now obviously until governor and council actually sign them, it's, you know, it's not official, official, so. But um I am happy that we should be getting just over the two million from opioid abatement. So that's on top of the fifteen percent allotments from settlements the county gets. So really.
Beyond.
Yes, this is, this will be like doubling what we currently have. So that's good news. And again, we're pending, you know, like uh. I think five other settlements to hopefully start coming in relatively soon. Um, because the A G's office did relay that those should be in the, you know, final stages hopefully for some of, of having settlements issued. So that's good news. Um yes, the long-term care one will involve a bit more work. Um again, we'll see what amount that really does come down. Um, again, we'll see what amount that really does come down to being, um. We did get, uh, a separate, um, C F I pick pick. Uh, grant amount that has fertilized only certain, uh, amounts towards assisted living, so that is. About to come in as far as monetarily. Um, thank you for Jason for confirming what that amount was, that I couldn't quite tell that DJ just. Was giving us, it did seem somewhat familiar, but, uh, that's, that's what that amount is for. Um, as mentioned, you know, it, you know, by Commissioner Coil, we're, we're in, 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 uh, Commissioner Churchill, we're all. Very busy, you know, we're very, hence extremely busy on the U K G pro-dimension side.
When, when do you think Phil the Bell will be up in one?
I have to wait for launching. Or launch, what, the third weekend in December for the January period?
That's what slated, there's some things that aren't working out on their side, that they're not even ready to have us test yet.
January, um, but, yeah, we're having some struggles with some stuff, so.
That's to be expected when you have a big change.
Yeah, and again, part of it is because there, we're not using or going to what previously was a workforce. Product, we're going to something that was the company that merged with Kronos, uh, O D Pro or O D. Uh, group, uh, ultimate group product. So it's a different platform, and I think they're not as used to. Uh, government entities, especially as detailed as we are, with some of our pay policies and cruel policies. Or having eight unions or. But, uh, that, that's it, just very, very busy.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Major, yeah, Anthony, Danville. Excuse me.
How are you?
Good.
I didn't hear, sorry.
I just, I just asked him how everything was going.
It's going well, um, not a ton, uh, going on besides the amount of interviews I've had, it's insane. It's a good problem to have. I've probably had a, a average of three a day through last week, so.
That is awesome.
If we can get even half of those numbers, I'll be stoked, so, um. Right now I have three people that have gone through the poly and everything else, so I can. Send those over to H R and get those rolling, um, at some point this week, and. Uh, we also had the County Corrections Academy that just got completed. I just finished last week, and Officer Jacob Northrup was nominated by his peers as the honor graduate. So it's a pretty big deal.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Uh, besides that, uh, same old, same old, we're just trucking, so.
Okay. Uh, anything about the, the, uh, TV show?
No, so, uh, Jason had still, he was still waiting to hear back from, uh, Lucky Eight.
Just curious on that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm gonna go Jason Smith. Morning, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, let's see here, as Commissioner Coil mentioned, we had, uh, three, uh, positive employees. Um, test positive for COVID, um, did not affect any residents and no further testing is needed, uh, so that's a good thing. Um, we continue with, uh, full opening, no mask required still. Um, uh, Kate, uh, uh, Horgan from the New Hampshire Association of Counties reached out to me asking. If we could host an information session for, um, representatives from the state. Um, Hillsborough County also did this, and so she thought it would be a good opportunity for. Um, the constituents to understand a little bit more about operations and what the vision is for the future, so we'll look forward to that. Um, in addition to that, you received the, uh, third quarter compliance work plan that just is an overview of all of the. Federally mandated requirements that we are, uh, required to do per the O I G. Um, and C M S, uh, so if there is anything further that you need, please let me know with that. Um, and then in addition to that, we have, um, the award that was, um, granted, I, I know that. Um. Chuck and I and, uh, the grant writer will be working through the contract process, but in the back of my mind, I'm also now need to start working on. Program development and internal processes and recruitment and looking at all of that, um, as we move forward with that process, so. Um, just looking forward to, um, all of those next steps. That's pretty much, thank you.
I'm gonna go to Catherine Mann, Sheriff's Bureau. I don't seem to share a bond, so.
Yeah, Sheriff's, uh, headed to a meeting at Concord, so unfortunately he's, uh, had to dip out a little bit early. Uh, just to let you know, so unfortunately we've had another dispatcher resign. Uh, so this is gonna leave us with six out of our fourteen regular dispatch positions open. Uh, we're gonna meet with Allison and Autumn next week and see if we can really ramp up some efforts on, um, you know, some recruitment on that end. Uh, other than that, business as usual, uh, everybody's busy over here.
Okay, thank you, yeah, Catherine. Uh, I'm gonna go, I think it's Kathy Stacy in the middle, Kathy, are you there?
Yeah, good, yeah, good morning, um, yeah, business as usual at the register, got a couple of big. Transfers, one in New, uh, Newcastle for four million cash, and the other one in. Portsmouth for five point five million cash, it's amazing to me how much these people have money. Uh, but I did just want to tell you that, uh, Kate Horgan and I and the committee have been reviewing the current bills. Right now, we're looking at a hundred and thirty-three new L S Rs. Uh, and eighty-eight holdovers from last session. And, um, I just saw that you know that there is a C A C R N to eliminate the Register of Deeds position.
Um. So let me, let me ask you, how do you, how do you feel about that, Karen?
Hey, you know what? I'd rather be appointed than maybe I'd be making the kind of money I should be making. Okay, let's get real. Uh, but, but, uh, I don't think it'll go anywhere, it's, it's out of a dispute out of Grafton County, because. They have some serious problems up there, so it's really unfortunate. Um, the retirement committee that I'm on with regards to Group Two has been, uh, meeting every Thursday at one o'clock. Um, it's kind of interesting, obviously, it's, it's, um. Overwrought with, um. Group Two individuals, uh, participants, um, so it's gonna be interesting, I, the, the consensus has been. With myself as well as the senators that there's, they, we do not believe that there should be any, um, increase in taxes or, or. Or, uh, money coming from the towns, municipalities and counties to, whatever they decide to do. It needs to be, uh, terminally funded by the state, so we'll see what happens, we know what happens with that, because. They already, you know, they stopped paying what they were supposed to pay previously, so we'll see, but that's the status.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Allison.
Hi, good morning. Um, um, we've had a couple of personnel items that have come up that have taken a little bit of time. Um, I do want to let you know that we did have a critical notification from our vendor Voya, which was formerly Benefit Strategies. That impacted, that came by to us relatively quickly last week. It impacts, uh, to the employees with their high deductible plans or their H S A cards and funding, they were moving things over. Um, they were Voya, um. Acquired Benefit Strategies, so now they've done all of their internal, uh, system work. Um, it was, it's something that caught us off guard, so there was a lot of communication, we had two days to turn around to get to the employees. To make sure everybody knew that they could not use their H S A cards or F S A cards, that they would end up being, um, replaced. And I find it, the, the timing of it, of our notice, Voya must have known, because. Pretty much anybody that I've talked to already had, uh, their cards on Monday or Tuesday at the latest with their new PIN numbers. So I don't think they wanted to tell the clients too close, I think they had prepped it and was ready to publish and push those cards out. Because I think it would have been chaotic had we had a little bit more time, because of course we immediately called our broker and said, what the heck's going on here? We, we should have been told this long ago. Anyway, we think, um, we think we're okay with it, there's a couple bugs, we've gotten a few phone calls that we're gonna work out. Um, and get back to those people, um, worked on the annual, my annual report, hope to have that to Leila by Friday. And, um, I did a report for the OSHA because I was asked to testify, but I had too many things going on here to do that. So I sent my report up to two of our H R affiliate members. So that they could testify, um, on behalf of the H R affiliate group with the information that I had supported for and why we don't want it. And lastly, um, I have worked, I'll be stepping down as the H R president, because I've been in that role over two years, like three years. So, um, we'll be having our elections in November, but as an outgoing consideration for the group, I took on, um. A revision to the bylaws, they haven't been changed in many, many years, so I took that on and have been doing that offline. To help them and get things a little bit more up to date, and I asked to reach out to Kathy. Um, she was very helpful to me because I asked for her, um, review of the bylaws and some of the changes I made, and she made some great recommendations. And I took the listen, and, um, that's all I have, thank you.
Leila, what do you got?
Morning, morning. Um, so I did compose a social media post on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. For the Facebook, Rockingham County Facebook and Instagram pages, um, it's, I believe it's with you still, um, for editing.
Yes, I, I didn't work on it yet, but I will.
Autumn's, Autumn's anxious.
Yes, uh, thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, um, I did.
Just need a little revision, I think.
Um, I finalized the postage meter R S P, so I'll be posting that this afternoon. Um, I met with the sheriff's office yesterday with Robin, uh, regarding the website, um. Their visions for, or what they want, so that was, that was interesting and productive, um. And I just want to remind everyone that the deadline for next week, next week's agenda submission is tomorrow, two, not Monday.
Can you just repeat that one more time? Deadline?
Deadline for next week's agenda is tomorrow at two, not Monday.
Okay, perfect. Alright, um, did I leave anybody out? I think I got everybody. So let's move on to new business. Yes. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the A P warrant. What's been made? I've got, um, questions, some inconsistencies, I meant to bring it up, I have made a mistake. I don't give a second, so.
Do, why don't you explain before we?
I, I, we were given three warrants today to sign. You know, they look like this, you guys already signed them?
Yeah.
And there's one missing. This one is missing. We did not receive this warrant today, and it's on the payroll.
So there are many warrants that you're approving today, I handed you my files that I prepared.
We are.
That is not a warrant from the Commissioner's Office.
So, this is a warrant from facilities, right?
So, though.
And it's listed on our sheet in this amount, but we did not receive this warrant today.
Right.
I just want to reconsider the vote. Commissioners, put in the motion number four. Which fails for lack in a second, so. Alright, any other new business? Ready? No, okay, so we're gonna move on to public comments. Um, I don't see anybody from the public. Um, however, I did, and I probably should have brought this up on a new business, but, um, I'm wondering if we're. Um, we still haven't received the minutes for the, um, childcare stuff that is requested. Um, the person that texted me said it's been seven days, they have not received it, and they want it. When will we get it?
Um, I got them yesterday, so I've been busy with other stuff, and so, I know, I have to review the minutes from the last meeting that occurred last week. Uh, they were just typed, that person had other things going on, they just typed them, it came to me yesterday. Jason, I have to review those minutes, I have to, we have to approve them, and then I told Leila she would have them over by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay.
I, with everything going on, I had to prioritize what was critical.
This is just someone from the public that asked for these, wants to see them, if he hasn't seen them, it's been seven days.
Well, we have, I have to prioritize what's more critical.
I'm just being the messenger, yeah, it's not coming in front of me, so, but anyway, alright, so we'll have those tomorrow, let's go.
Thank you.
Um, and you, so we're gonna be going into non-public, are we, right? Who are you guys, you're very public, I'm Eddie.
Two or three.
Bye.
Alright. So, um, I think that I moved the hundred and seventy-one public person up to ninety-one and count three.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Commissioners, would you like me to come down now, or?
Allison, call me. Okay, no.
We had one. Um.
What was the first issue?
We need to see that someone's on page one, it's free.
Yeah, we don't even know what it was.
Right, right.
I don't think we need to.
No, I don't think the other ones, there, there's no need to see.
Yeah, so, um, we've come out of non-public, uh, we are not making, and selling any news, my move to adjourn.
Second, second. All the babies say aye, aye. We are adjourned.